Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, I'm sure. Oh. I'd like to call the March 29th, 2022 meeting of the Board of Zoning Appeals Order. Board members present today include myself, Bill Sintel, Chair, my left,
Bill Parks.
Mike Bird.
Randy Eskridge.
Paul Calabrese. My green light wasn't coming on.
Right. It came on then.
Randy, would you lead us in prayer?
Yeah, I'm of the Baptist faith and, you know, this many people in a Baptist meeting would probably pass a collection plate, but this being a meeting of mostly Presbyterians, that won't get it. So if you will, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Our Father, we thank you for your love and we thank you for the opportunity to meet. And we just pray that you will give us the courage and strength to do what's right for not only our city, but everyone involved in this. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
Before we get started, and I've seen people doing it, but I want to remind everybody that if you wish to speak, to sign up on the sheet over here, anyway, ask that you provide your name, address through the sign in sheet located by the front door. The board is comprised of Malden citizens appointed by the Malden City Council. We are a legal board that operates under the South Carolina Comprehensive Planning Act, and we function in the same manner as a court of law. All statements made here today must be true and factual. Decisions by this board can only be made within the parameters of state law and upon conclusive evidence that the applicant's request meets the prescribed findings of fact that extraordinary circumstances and unnecessary hardships prevent strict adherence to the law. Furthermore, state law prohibits this board from granting any variance due to the personal, financial hardships, or simply because a variance could make the property or land use more profit. Today, we have one item on the agenda. Staff will provide a brief presentation and overview of the case. At the conclusion of the staff's presentation, the applicant will be invited to speak. Following the applicant's presentation, we will open up the public hearing to recognize those wishing to comment on the item at hand. Public comment is limited to three minutes. At the end of the conclusion of the comment, the public hearing will be closed and the board will convene for discussion and to render a decision. Please note that once this body makes a decision, it is considered final. An appeal to our decision is through the circuit court and must be filed with the clerk of court within the parameter of time prescribed by the law. And with this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight you have before you a request for a special exception at 400 Brookfield Parkway. This is the old site of Morley where they had a contact center. The application tonight is for a private school for Greenville Classical Academy. They provide education to students from K four through 12th grade. I've provided you in your report a little bit about Greenville Classical Academy. They are currently under contract to purchase this facility at 400 Brookfield Parkway to move their school operations there. This is subject to the Brookfield Corporate Center Restrictive Covenants, and I also provided a little bit in your report about that. There wasn't in their covenants until recently, there was no provision as to whether they allow schools or not. It was just not listed as either permitted or prohibited. But the the property owners there recently went through the exercise of amending their restrictive covenants where they now do have some specific provisions that would allow for a school at this property we are talking about tonight. Greenville Classical Academy is proposing to open up their school there, moving it from their Woodruff Road location and hope to have the ability to enroll up to 600 students at this location. With your reports, I provided you a traffic analysis that was prepared by ICE, specifically Craig Nelson with that company. His report showed that 47 vehicles are going to be able to be stacked in the car line for K through five grades and that 34 vehicles will be able to be stacked in the car line for sixth through 12th grades. And his analysis shows that there will be sufficient onsite vehicle stacking space so that the cars don't back up and block Brookfield Parkway. There's plenty of parking at this property. As far as what our ordinances require, they would require 140 spaces and they've got at least 380 just on their site alone or on their property alone. The Comprehensive Plan designates this property as an employment center. The zoning for this property is S1 Trades and Commercial Services. And in your report, I've included the criteria that the board is supposed to review for when it reviews a request for a special exception, you'll notice that there are 12 criteria that are contained in the ordinance that the board has to find is true in all cases in order to grant special exception. I've highlighted on here, for the most part, they meet all the criteria. There are a few of these though, that are rather subjective in nature. And so that will be up to the board to determine as to whether they feel like it meets some of those more subjective criteria. But the staff has reviewed this and certainly leaves it up to the board to decide whether or not this should be approved. But in the case that the board does approve it, staff does have some specific conditions that it recommends. Those conditions are that the approval you're considering tonight is just for this property at 400 Brookfield Parkway. On the subject of athletic events, since athletic events are right now listed as a prohibitive use in the restrictive covenants, the condition that the staff would recommend is that athletic events would only be allowed at the property of 400 Brookfield Parkway as they become expressly permitted by the restrictive covenants for the Brookfield Corporate Center. Number three, the enrollment at this school should not exceed 600 students. Four, the car line operation for picking up and dropping off students should be entirely contained on the property at 400 Brookfield Parkway and not back up traffic onto the adjacent roads. And lastly, there is one special criteria for schools that this applicant would have a hard time meeting, and that is the requirement for open space. Currently in the city's ordinances, we would require them to provide 75 square feet of outdoor play area for each student that's enrolled at the school. Well, that would be a lot for 600 students and you probably have seen at this site that there's not really a whole lot of grass space there on this property. And so the recommendation of staff is to modify this requirement for this applicant and just require them to provide 75 square feet of outdoor play area for each student that will be in that play area at one time instead of for the full 600 student enrollment. And that is the report and recommendation of staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
What's the possibility of all of them being out there at one time? Is there any or?
All 600 if they have that.
About 250 now, that's all they've got, the 600. And I have to say, from a standpoint of preparation, it's good to see somebody plan for the future and go, they got 250 now and they're planning for 600. You know, that's, is there a timetable on that when they want to hit the 600 or?
I'm sure the applicant when they present tonight might be able to answer that and any other questions you might have.
Why don't we go ahead and let the applicant speak and that'll kind of clear up some questions? Oh, I have, I'm sure other people on the board do. So if you would, please come on.
And thank you, Mr. Dear Haug, for all your support and assistance in this process. We're very excited to be here with you tonight. Do you, do you know what it means when a Baptist preacher takes off his watch?
No.
Yeah, but I can tell.
Absolute, absolute.
Don't.
It means absolutely nothing.
Don't do that. We'll start snoring up there.
Okay. Okay, well, fortunately, I'm not a preacher. I'm just a GCA dad of 10 years, chairman of the board, but I do get fired up when talking about the school and its future prospects. So again, very gratified to be with you tonight. Thank you for your time. So GCA was founded, you can skip to the next slide, please, was founded nearly 20 years ago to provide an excellent education within the classical and Christian school model. And we do this by asking the big questions of humanity's great works while forming virtue, inculcating wonder, and shaping affections towards the true, the good, and the beautiful. One distinctive of this time-tested model is its integration. That is, its intentional way that subjects like math, science, history, and the like are interwoven with Christian truths. Our head of school, Dr. Bouvier, will add a little color to this in a minute in similarly brief remarks. But in short, every class and everything we do, every subject, every activity of the school has one purpose, which is to see God's world rightly and to glorify Him. So notice that it's this goal of forming whole humans for life and eternity that we're after in partnership with parents and families and their churches, to be sure. And where this is true of a GCA graduate, then we consider that a success regardless of what happened, where they go next, whether it's a trade school, college, directly to the workforce, military, start a business, start a family. If these things are true of the character and quality and readiness of these graduates to be value-adding citizens to the community, then GCA considers that a successful outcome. And so I would note that classical Christian education is not the only way to achieve these results and achieve these outcomes. But it is a time-tested way and we're in that tradition. And there's growing demand for the kind of educational experience that GCA offers. We're in fact, the only five-day classical Christian school in the Greenville area. And so as a result, we've maxed out our capacity where we are located currently at the Woodruff Road Presbyterian Church, where we've been for 17 years. Very grateful for their partnership and their generosity. We have no space left to grow there and we continue to get applicants every week from around the upstate, the Greenville communities and surrounding communities, and even out of state. In recent years, we've taken families in from California, Pacific Northwest, Delaware, North Carolina. Just last week, we had a family who just moved from Austin, Texas and had already found GCA before they even landed in the upstate. Incidentally, they're looking to buy a home as we speak, so we would love to bring them into Malden. So all that to say, tonight, we're seeking your approval and your support to complete this transaction for 400 Brookfield. We would close, Lord willing, on Thursday. And we intend to plant roots there and make that a long-term campus location to sustain the growth that the Lord seems to have in store for this school. So we believe, and next slide, please, that we will be a benefit to Malden in a variety of ways. We seek to contribute to the economic vitality of the city, for instance, by absorbing what's currently vacant office space, by attracting families to the area, by supporting local businesses, and more broadly, by serving the community. So for example, of the service piece, the upper school of GCA has service days every year where they volunteer at food banks and the like, very active in picking up around us and maintaining our campus currently. That's something we would commit to as well here. And we also have a big annual event called the Fall Festival and Holiday Market, which attracts vendors and shoppers from across the upstate. It's typically held on the first Saturday of November and it's drawn as many as 4,000 attendees on a given Saturday. And I believe most recently it had a total transaction volume of $50,000 on that one day event. And we'd be looking to partner with somebody in the Malden community to sustain that. We would not intend to hold that on Brookfield in the property. So to ensure, Mr. Dear Haug had already mentioned this, but to ensure that this move is a success story for all the parties involved, especially our new neighbors, we've done the work to obtain full POA support for our presence there as a school and in the form of ultimately amending the covenants to allow our use as a school. Next slide, please. So we, we're by no means the first school intending to revitalize vacant office space and convert it to a school function. That's a bit of a national trend. There's some examples here of locations where that's been done. But that's what we seek to do here is to implement this playbook, particularly in the dislocations, the post-COVID world, the remote work, the hybrid, the flex type arrangements. It's too soon to say what happens to the office space as a sector, but we intend to occupy it immediately and add vitality and life and energy to the space in the ways mentioned. I do want to close with one quote from a recent Newsweek article about classical education. It says, "In today's divided age, producing graduates who love knowledge and relish discourse between different perspectives is more urgent than ever. Adults today are uninterested in continued learning past school, increasingly isolated from perspectives that diverge from their own and bitterly divided into ideological camps that see their opponents as detached from reality. But classical education offers a pedagogical model that could powerfully reverse these trends." So in sum, we're seeking your support for this move and we'd love to answer any objections or questions you may have. I don't know if you want to, we progress to a few other speakers who would like to add some brief bits of perspective or if we take Q and A now.
Let me ask with a raise of hands, how many people have signed up to speak? Did I go the high fire? Let's go ahead and let them.
Yes, sir.
I've, I've got some serious questions. Oh, I think it's a great idea.
Yes, sir.
Where I'm looking at is the safety and the well-being of the children. So we'll get to that. Let's, let's hear.
Yes, sir. I'll hand it over to our head of school, Dr. Bouvier. Thank you.
Please. Good evening. I will not take my watch off, so I will be brief. My name is Craig Bouvier and I am a current Malden resident and head of school at Greenville Classical Academy. We've been living in Malden for five and a half years and we love it and we are excited about the possibility of the school relocating there as well. I wanted to share briefly a little bit of color as referenced earlier about what classical is and why it's important for us to be part of a community like Malden. Our vision says, our vision states that we want to see generations of godly, biblically educated, academically prepared leaders for our homes, our communities, and our world. As a classical Christian school, we ascribe to the idea that the classical methodology trains and equips students to learn and think deeply about all issues of life. One author put classical education this way, and I quote, "It cultivates a lifelong love of learning and trains students to think clearly and to reason persuasive." But practically, what does that look like at our school? What are we doing to put those, that, those ideas into practice? We do not educate in a vacuum and we do understand the impact of community, as was referenced earlier. Our students are encouraged to give back to their community. They're encouraged to serve their community and that's, as Ron referenced, we do have service hours, which they're required to do. The goal of those is to instill in them a habit of service to not only their, you know, their homes, but their communities and their world. This is an important part of education for us, but it's just the beginning. We as a, and I'm going to only speak to classical tonight. Classical believes that everything that we do on that campus is educational and contributes in one way or another to students. It's either for their betterment or for their detriment. And our goal is to make sure that everything that we do, right down to fine arts, everything, recess, lunch is for their betterment and for the glory of God. So our students do not merely memorize content or regurgitate it back to us. We don't want to know, we don't want to hear our truths repeated back to us. We want them to think in higher categories. We want to think about information. We want them to scrutinize it, discern it, to determine if it is true. And as a classical school, we ask our students to critically analyze information, to ask hard questions, even of their teachers, and to discern the true from the false. We often tell our parents that a classical Christian school, that our hope is to produce posts in the ground, not kites in the air. Let me explain what I mean by that. Our desire is the same as yours, to help our students avoid being blown to and fro by myths and reactive trends, but instead position them to seek that which is true, which is good, and which is beautiful, which is every parent's desire for their children. Our ultimate desire is for our students to engage the world in winsome ways and loving ways to know and deep, to know deeply what they believe, to love others who are different, to live honorable lives, and to work hard no matter what they do. In essence, to be post-rooted deeply in the ground, able to withstand the storms that we all know will come. So this is who we are and why we are excited about our future. Our vision is to prepare leaders for our homes, our communities, and our world. And it's our hope that we do this right here in Malden, South Carolina. Thank you.
I guess we'll just go down the line here. Ron?
That was perfect. That was three minutes right on the button.
You seem to be giving the high sign, don't you? I can't pronounce the last name. That was you. All right. Rick? Rick? Yeah. Okay. I don't even know that. 418 Pine Grove Road. You, that's you. All right. Well, we've marked, well, see, we're getting through this pretty quick. Aaron? Parker Hodgson or something? There you go. Well, we're getting better.
Members of the committee, GCA board and community, thank you for allowing me to share with you how the annual fall festival has impacted my business and my family. I started taking family photos at the festival about 11 years ago. At the time, I simply wanted to have an opportunity to meet families in the community and hopefully make a little business out of a personal passion project. I had no idea that it would turn into a standing tradition for me and for dozens of families that return to my booth year after year to capture a moment of time in their growing family. Participation in the festival has certainly grown my business through personal connections. I have been able to make, to make, meet with families and individuals in our community. The business growth has allowed me to invest back into my community in a variety of ways that likely would not have been possible without that growth. The annual fall festival is a critical link between this school and families just like mine. It is critical platform for small businesses just like mine and a way for people to turn passion projects into income generating businesses that allow them to support their families and reinvest in their communities. The culture of the festival lends itself to vendors engaging with potential customers in a meaningful way that leads to new customers becoming lifelong customers who then generate the same. On a personal level, participation in the festival helped me to make connections with members of the GCA family. This past August, our daughter began the school year at a local public school. We very quickly realized that it was not the best fit for her and I reached out to GCA to see if they could help us. They counseled us through the transition process from public to private education and most importantly, ensured that the transition was smooth for our daughter. While she is a bright and amicable child, changing schools six weeks into your first year of middle school is, at best, unsettling. From her first moments on campus, she has been encouraged, cared for, and molded as a student and as a citizen. I'm not sure I will ever find the right words to express our gratitude. The students and families of our community need a place like GCA when typical school settings are not the best fit for their child. The festival plays a critical role in linking families with an educational option that may not, that they may not known, have known existed before their attendance at the festival. Finally, the core values of Greenville Classical Academy are on full display at the fall festival. There is no mistaking their desire to impact the community in a positive way through servant leadership. I feel strongly that the fall festival will increase its impact on the community and the proposed new location for the school. Once again, I sincerely thank you for your time and thoughtfulness in considering the new location of our school.
Thank you, ma'am. Christie Gray Smith? There you go.
Mr. Eskridge's benefit, I was raised Baptist, so just so you know. Hello, my name is Christie Gray Smith. I am a GCA parent. My husband Curtis and I have two of our daughters at GCA in eighth and seventh grade, and we have been part of the GCA family for 10 years. I am a native of Greenville County, live just outside Malden, but work inside Malden city limits as the executive director of Human Resources at Jackson Mark. So as I prepared for tonight and thought about what I wanted to share, one word immediately came to mind, community. Because it's really easy for me to tell you about GCA's community. I can tell you about all the transitions that our family has gone through in the last decade while we've been at GCA, how we transitioned from a two-professional income household to a full-time college student and one income, to job transitions to a surprise baby a month after our 20th wedding anniversary, and how all of those things were made much easier because of the community at GCA. It was made easier by those families who came alongside us, who ran our kids to and from when we couldn't do it, who texted homework assignments when a child forgot her textbook at school, or who fixed a daughter's hair on picture day because mommy was out of town on business and daddy didn't know how to do it. About those teachers and faculty who have loved and prayed for our children, who have cried for them and with them, these are all the easy things to say. But there is one other thing I wanted to talk about, and that is the type of education. My husband is a high school teacher at Greenville High School. I'm very thankful for the education I receive through Greenville County Public Schools, elementary through high school. My daughters could attend the local public schools that they're zoned for that are award-winning or a magnet school or a charter school. However, we wanted something different. We wanted something that came from our Christian worldview and we wanted our daughters to understand how everything was interconnected in this world. So we wanted them to understand that the facts that they memorized, be able to think them through for themselves and form an educated opinion that they could then express intelligently. This is the basic premise of the classical trivium. GCA offers a different type of education, one where math is knit together with history and literature and composers and artists and scientists, one where students see how the political stance of the world impacts the literature, the music, and everything else. Our children can sit around the dinner table and talk about real-world events that are taking place right now. They can look back at the history timeline they memorized as young children and ask questions from the past and understand where we are today. Our girls are growing up strong civic-minded individuals who can think for themselves, ask questions, and provide insights beyond their youth. This is what I wanted to share with you tonight and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Ford?
Good evening. My name is Todd Ford. I'm not only a parent of one student, but I have another one that's on the way next year. But I'm also a small business owner here in the greater Greenville area, and that's the perspective I have with regard to this. It gives me a lot of encouragement when I go read the vision statement, which Dr. Bouvier already read. I'm going to read it for you again. It's on the website if you want to find it there. It says, "GCA's vision is to see generations of godly, biblically educated, academically prepared leaders for our homes, our communities, and our world." There are about 32 and a half million small businesses in America and they cited one of the largest problems they have with continuing as being that they had labor quality issues. It gives me a great bit of excitement, that may be selfish sounding, but to know that we have a school who right now has 250 people that they're training up in these ways to be leaders in our community and our homes, that they're trying to grow into a much larger location, Lord willing, that we would have that many more people involved in Malden to grow up and be leaders of this community. Thank you for your time.
Chris Pot?
Hi, my name's Chris Pot. We've lived in Malden for 20 years, right down the road. And I have, I also own several commercial properties in the area. We started a business here, a hospitalist group that was a national hospitalist group. We grew it to $600 million over six years. And I've done several land development deals with David. He's worked through those with us very successfully and several new subdivisions in the area. My son is also working on several more now. So we heavily invested in Malden. So we've heavily invested in Malden. We have six kids, four were biological and two we fostered and adopted. And those are the two that are now at the school. And they have, as you can imagine, you know, some special needs with just trauma in their background. And the school's been incredibly accommodating, just, just very kind. And the kids have continued to flourish there. All of our kids went through the classical model. It's been very unbelievably successful, my kids, they're all gone through college and very successfully and, and now are running small businesses in the area as well. So I just wanted to leave you with a verse that says, "The wise man leaves an inheritance for his children's children." And my wife and I have made the largest single investment of our lifetime in this opportunity. And I would just ask you to consider what you can do for us as well. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Linda Martin?
Good evening and thank you for hearing us out tonight. My name is Lydia Marksen. I am from Fountain Inn, South Carolina, but Greenville Classical Academy was my home for 13 years from kindergarten to 12th grade. And I graduated from there in 2017 with honors. And I graduated magna cum laude from Clemson University just last year. And I'm currently working as a registered nurse. In the little time that I have, I don't want to waste your time. I can hardly begin to tell you how GCA has affected my life. From proper grammar to interpersonal communication to critical thinking, the skills I gained at GCA equipped me to excel in my studies at Clemson and are still impacting the way I learn and work as a nurse in the emergency room. GCA not only taught me about mathematics, science and English, but it taught me how they relate to one another as well as how they relate to the God who created them. What other high schooler gets to write a paper exploring their theology of math? My apologetics class taught me what a worldview is and how it colors everything I perceive and do, and how that is both helpful and dangerous. Logic and rhetoric classes showed me how to think critically, research well and formulate an argument. Service days and community service hours taught me how to be engaged in my community and love my neighbor as myself. And our student leadership team equipped me with essential skills, which I will continue to use for the rest of my life. Looking back at what I was taught, I realized that GCA isn't just a school, as was mentioned before, it's a foundation. The board and the faculty at GCA are seeking to equip its students with the understanding and skills to become effective, thoughtful, intentional citizens and leaders. Allowing GCA to move to Malden can only be a blessing to your community. And I for one, look forward to seeing how this expansion makes Greenville Classical even more effective. Thank you.
Keith Bales?
My dad's a retired Baptist minister and yes, he would pass the plate.
Amen.
My name is Keith Bales. My wife Diane and I have two children who both have graduated from Greenville Classical Academy. As parents, we have the goal to rear our children, to love God, to love others, to love their country and to know and love the truth. One goal we didn't expect to have, but became very important as our children were at GCA, was for them to not only know and love truth, but to be able to think through hard concepts about what is true and be able to articulate those concepts in the arena of ideas. Now, most parents, we have the goal of raise our children and they'll go to college, hopefully get a scholarship to pay for it. And we certainly were no exception to that. And in order to do that, our children had to compete for the benefits that would pay for their education. What we didn't realize was the critical role GCA would have in that goal become reality. There are numerous academically gifted students in our community that would outshine our children. What GCA did was prepare them to apply and articulate the knowledge they received during their education, which helped them compete. Our daughter is paying her own way through college at North Greenville University because she had to go on campus and compete for their trustee's scholarship. This competition required participating in roundtable discussions with peers and educators. She also had to write a paper on a topic assigned to her on the spot and as well as go through interview process with NGU professors. Our son went through the process of receiving an appointment to the United States Military Academy at West Point. His education at GCA prepared him well to articulate in written and spoken word his desire to serve our country. He was given the tools to sit before local leaders in our community and explain why he should receive an appointment from his congressman or his senator. I don't say this to pat myself on the back. Diane and I could not have done this on our own. GCA invested with us, preparing them for the next steps of their adult lives. And for many years, that preparation has taken place in a facility that is not our own. We're incredibly thankful for Woodruff Road Presbyterian Church and the years that we've had there. But this new facility would allow our teachers to have a classroom of their own. They wouldn't have to pack up their instructional materials at the end of each class just because they're functioning in a borrowed room. The facility would allow our upper school students to have a locker for their books and materials. I mean, can you imagine going to high school and not having a locker? GCA students have done that for years. There are numerous other examples I could share why GCA needs this facility. I know this facility will benefit the mission of GCA and I am certain Greenville Classical Academy will benefit the city of Malden. We live in this city and we would just be absolutely thrilled for GCA to call Malden its home.
Thank you.
Is your son in the, still in the service academy? Thank you for your service, for him, for your service.
Stephen Reeves?
Good evening. I'm Stephen Reeves. I come with kind of a unique perspective. I work for the church, Woodruff Road Presbyterian Church. I'm the administrator there. I've been there eight years, moved here from Richland County where I was a law course for 10 years and moved up here to take a job at the church as administrator. And a big part of that job when I was hired here was to be the liaison between the church and the school. Before me, the deacons of our church were often interacting with the school and trying to help them do things with our campus and things like that. But the church hired me kind of out of the blue and it was, it was a good fit. I've enjoyed it here and it's been, it's been a neat job. I do have another perspective where all four of my kids go there. I have four, three sons and one daughter from 10th grade down to fourth grade, I believe. And, and they, they've been there since, since we started here, moved here in 2014. So I work at the church, I attend the church and then my kids go to school there as well. But from the church's perspective, I can say that the school has been a good tenant. Our church has not charged the school any rent since they've been there and they, they've done that on purpose. Our, the elders at our church have, they, they've come alongside the school and it was formed even before it was Greenville Classical Academy, there was a school there, but it transformed into GCA. And the, the elders of our church basically wanted to come alongside the school and help them be who they are and allowing them to use our church's facilities. Otherwise, as a lot of churches are during the week, they're, they're empty buildings. And our session thought that was a waste of space that the Lord blessed us with. So they've been using our facilities for many years and like I said, they've been good tenants. I've been here for eight and I'm, I'm interact with them basically on a daily basis. I see many of the teachers, the administrative staff and I, I see them on a daily basis and it's been a good relationship. So just wanted to let the council know that as far as being a good neighbor to those around them, I don't see any problems with the school as far as that's concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. We've made our way through the list, but just so it's an equal opportunity thing, is there anyone out there that disagrees with this would like to speak? Should have signed up anyway, but that's okay. All right. Having said that, we're going to talk, we're probably going to need your assistance, sir. We're going to run a couple of ideas around back and forth and you're going to probably have to help us. The playground area for me. Big hill up there. If y'all leave it alone, them kids gonna have legs look like this going up that hill. It's a pretty good sized lot, but it's so far from the building.
So the question's about the location of the playground?
Yes. Where's the location going to be?
I don't know if there's a red pointer anywhere, but you see how the building itself, the white is, is staggered, sort of in a leeward south, we'll call it side. There's a grass section underneath the, correct, correct. To the right, under the right half of the building, there's a grass rectangle. Our intent is to locate the playground there.
Down by the water?
It's got a, the parking lot between it and the, oh, oh, tree line and then water, then water beyond that.
Okay. Cause I knew for 600 students, y'all gonna have to need just a skinch over acre.
Say just a skinch over what now?
Acre.
Oh, okay. Okay.
My other thing was the going in and going out for the blue line. Unless a lot of people driving Mini Coopers, that's going to be tight back there in that corner. Turn around and come back.
Turnaround?
Yeah.
If we ever even need that particular route, it's at the full 600, which to your earlier question, if we grow at 10% a year, it'll take at least nine years to get there.
You bust something out.
So, so we have a variety of routes that don't require that turnaround of the cul-de-sac. But
I went over there and I went over Sunday, I was in a little Toyota and I said, man, it was, my wife and I used to take our daughter over here to another school that has, and boy, you can, you can hear a lot of stuff over there when that turn.
Moms and SUVs are dangerous back there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, with a full size truck and SUV.
No, we, we, we grant, yeah, we grant your point, but just worth noting that that particular route, there's a variety of routes we have and opportunities we have to stack throughout the, you know, the vast capacity of parking real estate. And should we use that turnaround? It would be at the full 600. We may never even need that, that particular routing.
My last question is, where would be the emergency egress areas in case of a fire or a fire drill?
Sure. So the, the chunk of sidewalk to the left of where the playground would go, that sort of wide strip of sidewalk, that's a ground level egress, that would be the lower school. And then similarly, the second story egress is out to the shaded area up top. It has a straight exit.
Jump, David.
What's that?
I could jump. Jump, yeah.
Oh, and, and on the sides of the building as well.
That was the only part I felt like if the situation, depending on what building where was on fire, fire trucks be coming down that back lane. That's going to be tight with children.
The turnaround back the area we were talking about earlier to the lower right of the building, there's already a hammerhead built in, which is, which would accommodate the emergency vehicles.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks, sir. See, kids have to ask their question. All right. Either one of you gentlemen have any questions?
Yes, I had some comments. Same thing that Mr. Centel talked about was the playground area. And you're, now I read this report and I walked around the, the building this past Sunday. It's a nice building, it'll make a good school, but I have some concerns. Number one is the playground. You're going to build the wall, but it's going to be right up to the river, the water there?
No, sir. It would be, it would be within the sidewalk, there's, there'd be the, there'd be a fence line for the playground, the sidewalk, parking lot, tree line, and then water. So it's, it's, it's up where he's indicating with the mouse, right alongside the building.
Prior to the parking lot, correct?
It would be, it'd be above the parking lot, correct.
Or now, right?
Forever. And, and to an earlier question, we typically only have one class, one grade out on the playground at a time. It's not some big school-wide event to, to, you know, partake of, of playground elements. We tend to just send one class and we have small class sizes by virtue of, you know, classical Christian model. So if suppose we have two sections of third grade, that might be 40 kids, 45 kids. So to the earlier question about how many folks, it would never be the full school. It would typically be a single grade at a time.
You're still going to have to control that though, because kids are kids. I was a kid a long time ago and they're going to come out around the fence there and they're going to go to the water.
Let me just say one thing first. The broader sort of line of inquiry here around security is something we take very seriously. I would submit and Stephen can speak and Dr. Bouvier, we've gotten really good at security, living right against Woodruff Road for 17 years. And we would bring those skill sets and that, that commitment to security and that would inform everything we do with respect to layout and programming. So, yeah.
I referenced earlier my comments that everything we do is educational. So I worked in public school for a number of years. I worked here. The perception is that when they get out in the playground, they go wild. That's not what happens at our school. Everything is structured and ordered and every, every student is supervised. And so where that playground is, will, will accommodate them. And the fact is there will be no students near the water because they won't be outside unsupervised. They will be always supervised because we look at, we look at recesses as educational and it's, it's an opportunity to disciple and teach. And so that's part of the process as well.
Okay, that was one of my concerns was the safety of the students.
Yep.
Another concern I have is the parking and the dropping of the students off in the morning and picking them up in the evening. Now, I read the book twice. I read David's twice that he sent me the emails and I walked around the school. But when the rubber meets the road, when the, when the students and the parents or their guardians are having dinner at night, they're going to say, they're going to ask the student, how was school today? And the student's going to say, school was good, but the playground isn't big enough or we weren't supervised well. So you're going to have to really control that.
I mean, I, I think we can speak to that as we currently control that on a, on a very large, not incredibly large, but a growing church campus where we interact with that church on a daily basis, whether they have funerals or different things, we're always flexible and able to pivot pretty quickly. And I don't think, you know, I think that speaks to the fact that we're, we're supervising and organized to be able to pivot that way. And so I, I think the playground will be, I mean, Larry, you can probably speak to that as far as the size of the playground, but it's going to be appropriate for our, our grade level to be out there. But you're not going to have kids running all over the place. That's just, that's, I think that's a perception we had earlier that, you know, that there's going to be kids everywhere. That's not who we are. That's not what we do. Everything for us has a, has a purpose. And so, and including kids are never unsupervised.
I'll add, first of all, it's clear you're very, have been very thoughtful about our application and our petition for this. So thank you for that. These are great questions, similar to the questions that the neighbors have had as well. So I also want to observe that in addition to what's been said about how we've gotten good at these skill sets, living right along Woodruff Road in a mixed use environment with the church. It's also worth noting with so much parking real estate, we have the optionality to cordon off a section at will and use that for extended outside physical activity space, not during car line to be sure, but throughout the day. So we can kind of flex and extend play area, activity area as appropriate, utilizing the full totality of our space in a very safety conscious way. So we're not limited strictly to the playground space to be outdoors, say.
I have another question. Who will control the traffic flow in the morning and in the afternoon when the students are picked up?
Yes, sir. So currently, and Dr. Bouvier could speak to that, we use handfuls of our full-time faculty and staff to man the, the full car line experience, morning drop off and afternoon pickups, both midday for lower, lower grades and end of day for the rest of the grades. It's a fully staffed operation that's very well organized and very well run. It's not haphazard, just show up and drive wherever you want and, you know, grab your kid and disappear. There's an ordered routine to it and it's been rigorously adhered to and it's overseen and governed by full-time faculty and staff, including the headmaster himself.
So you see the traffic is no problem?
Correct. And I believe the third party, well, I don't believe it does, the third party traffic study bears that out and, and, and shows that we can grow to the size of 600 enrollment that we've agreed to as a cap and fully satisfy all traffic elements within, within the confines of our lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate what you said, headmaster. I'm 67 years old and I can remember doing things that I wasn't supposed to do. And I was at a plant where I had 28 people working for me. God hit me. I hope you're right.
I mean,
And that's our, our concern.
Absolutely.
Is every child goes home.
And that's our concern as well.
I won't, you know, if it's I won't, you know, if it's up to me, we'd have 10 foot fences around it and we'd have German Shepherds outside, you know?
I think that's, I think that's called a prison.
In today's time, you can't, you can't prepare for everything.
I, yes, you're absolutely right.
These are simple things. And if, you know, that's a great, you've got a plan for the playground. You got 600 kids there. I know they're not all going, but you're going to have to grow some. So these are the questions that.
Absolutely.
Just want to, those, I don't, I don't want to read in the paper five years from now that I proved something and a child got hurt.
I totally get that. We, we appreciate that concern and we would just submit that those concerns are not unique to this location or this application. That those, those would be pieces that we have to thoughtfully solve for and address and rigorously govern and maintain regardless of where we're, we're to locate and have done for the last 17 years on Woodruff Road. Thank you.
Did I, did I understand earlier that you, you expect something like 10% growth yearly? We're at 250, are you at 250 now with capacity to go to 600?
I wouldn't say we necessarily expect that level of growth, but that's just what it would take to get to 600, about nine years at 10%. But what that growth rate actually ends up looking like, there's a lot of demand for it, as noted earlier. Not even, you know, beyond the upstate, folks coming from out of state for a variety of reasons, looking to upgrade their educational experience and naturally finding G C A as a part of that shortlist for solutions. So we could see growth rates north of that or not, but five to 10 to 15 years, I would, I would estimate would get us at that cap.
What was your growth rate last year?
It was, well, that was weird coming out of COVID and then back, I think it was 215 to 242. Whatever that is percentage wise. And then I think we're currently tracking towards literally hit our cap mid 260s already for next year.
Gentlemen, either one of y'all have another question?
Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks, you got one?
Yes, sir, I do. I heard earlier from somebody that you're closing on this property this coming week. Is that true?
Pending your approval. Yes, sir. We would close on Thursday.
That was my question. Is the purchase contingent on approval?
It is.
So I've got a couple of questions and then a few comments as well. So is the, is there a desire just to upfit the interior?
Yes, that's correct. Add some color to that, but it would just be strictly an interior outfit. We'd put some branding on the outside that would be appropriate for the park in terms of the aesthetics. It would have our name on the building in short and we'd update the signage on the roadsides. But otherwise, all upfit and, and up enhancements would be in the interior.
Are you working with an architect that would do a, a life safety plan?
A what plan? I'm sorry.
Life, life safety plan.
See for permit.
Sure.
So we have not engaged one yet.
Okay.
Depending the sale. But our intention is to work with one that has K through 12 experience. And of course, we also have a very unique, we've talked about our curriculum and our class sizes are smaller and just the things we want and the aesthetic that we would be desiring. Yeah, that's a critical part of it and life safety would be part of those draws.
And my other question really just had to do with the traffic quantities. I'm, I'm a civil engineer by trade and, and, and I don't, I don't pretend to understand what is being calculated in that, in that traffic study. But I guess my question has to do with, has there been any kind of study given on what the previous business traffic counts were? And if this would be an increase or a decrease from that?
We do not have that information. We have not seen previous traffic flows. It's a question we've had as well. Don't have the answer. I think a helpful way to understand the, the traffic routing question is, for me at least, and simplistic thinker, is in terms of linear feet available to us in this parking structure compared to linear feet available to the school currently. And this is more than a 3X expansion of the space available to us. And we're not trying to go grow 3X in size. So in terms of apples and apples, school currently to school there, we have ample data to show our own homebrewed analysis and the third-party study, regardless of tracking, stacking counts and all that, I don't understand that either. But linear feet of routing, total routing capability, it's more than 3X to go from Woodruff Road Pres campus to this campus, which is what gives us a great, a high degree of confidence that it's not going to be, not going to be a problem. But to your question, we do not have apples to apples with a previous tenant.
So I, just as a comments, so I'm an employee of Jacobs, which is the U-shaped building just south on, on the bottom of the screen there. And I have looked at this building for many years, just at my desk, the way that it faced. I actually have been at home for two years now, working remotely. And the Jacobs building is sitting mostly vacant, a, a, as this one is. So I'm excited that something of, of this caliber could potentially move in there and take up this, this empty space. I'm, I'm also, my spouse is a assistant principal in Greenville County. And her and I talked about this and she's really, really excited about this. I, I, I think that there's a lot of things that could move into Malden that, that don't necessarily have the, the growth aspect, the economic aspect on the city that, that this would. I, I really think that the growth in a city starts with your churches and your schools. And so, and, and this, this is, I think, a really good use of that. And her school, incidentally, is Fisher and it's located in basically a business and technology park like this would be. So the precedent is really there. And if you get down to it, Malden Elementary and Malden Middle School are on Holland Road and surrounded by businesses. And I, I heard the lady earlier saying that she worked at Jackson Marketing, which is right there. And with the Bridgeway Station coming, I mean, all, all that, it just surrounds our school. So I think that there's, there's precedent there for, for this kind of tenant to be, to utilize that space. So I, I really am excited about, about this possibility.
I had one other question. Reading through the document that we had, took several readings, but very nice, David. Thank you. It hit me that you're going to use approximately 80,000 square feet in the building. Does anybody know how many square feet are in that building? That's it. So it's not going to end up where there's more and you're going to have to share later on. So you're going to take control of that whole building if approved. Thank you. That's all.
All right. At this time, if y'all don't have anything else, do I hear a motion for or against?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say one thing. When I went out and looked over the property and the building and everything, my first question to myself was, why would anybody want to put a school in an industrial or an office park area? Driving through there, like Michael says, it's sad to see all those big buildings empty. I mean, big, nice buildings empty. And you folks have evidently, and I'm going to say, done your due diligence. Cause like he said, the book's here, David's, David's had part of it. Y'all have had, covered all your bases and we're not used to that. And I may as well be honest and I really appreciate what you've done. You know, I don't see how moving forward, that I, I'm speaking for myself, could be anything but positive towards this. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve this variance as written by staff.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, raise your hand. Looks like you got a scoop. And I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I don't know, I don't know if anybody else has done it, but welcome to Malden.
Thank you.
We got one other business to, the meeting. We do approval. It's been so long, nobody remembers what they were.
So actually, we just record the meeting now. So there's not any minutes that we have to do because the meeting's recorded and we keep that recording. I guess the only thing really left you have today is a German if you want.
I guess at this time, I'm going to close the meeting.